Go live on YouTube. We are all set.
Good evening. The planning board is now in session July 13th, 2020. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law 30A 18 and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Southborough's website at For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting or participate in the public hearing may do so in the following manner, which is HTTPS www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. We'll now move to the first item on the agenda. Karina.
All right. First item on the agenda is the master plan committee update. And before I hand it over to Mimi, I just wanted to give a brief update on some of the administrative things. As you recall, at the last planning board meeting, we revised the charge for the master plan committee, and there were some questions from the town clerk's office to town council regarding ex officios and representatives and such. So the bottom line is town council opined that the charge that we had submitted in a revised version was acceptable in format, and so it was filed with the town clerk appropriately. So we're in good shape with that. The master plan charge was changed to reduce the quorum and create a couple more ex officio or modify some of the seats to ex officio. So that worked out. And in the interim, we also have a new member who wants to be appointed or a person who wants to be appointed as a new member from the municipal technology committee. His name is Will Warren. And so at some point during this piece of the agenda, the planning board needs to discuss and appoint and vote to appoint him or not to the master plan.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Mills. Need a motion to appoint.
I make a motion to appoint said representative.
Will Warren.
Will Warren.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes.
Hulahan, yes.
Very good. Next item on the agenda.
Mimi, do you have anything to add for the master plan update?
Well, just the update that the master plan committee met on July 1st, and we did an in-depth review of the visioning statement which we received from MAPC on June 17. In general, the committee felt the statement didn't capture Southborough's uniqueness and therefore didn't really communicate our distinctive story. So Sarah and Judith will be incorporating the comments from the master plan committee and will hopefully have another draft document for our July 29 meeting. And as always, I welcome any comments from any planning board members or anyone in the public can email me. And I would also like to thank our former members for their insightful input and welcome our new members and look forward to their valuable contributions.
Very good. Mimi, this is starting to be a long road to traveling down. Just sticking with it and keeping your head down and moving along forward. Really appreciate it. Excellent work.
Thanks. I anticipate that the hard part is over with. It should get easier from here.
The next item on the agenda.
Next item on the agenda is a application for major site plan approval for Seven Chestnut Hill Road. It's a barn project. It's actually the old barn that was deconstructed from Deerfoot Road property that was sold. And the trustees, we have to read the legal.
Read the public hearing notice.
Yes. All right. So public hearing notice. Major site plan approval, Seven Chestnut Hill Road, assessors map 62 parcel four. For section 17410 of the Southborough zoning code, the planning board of the town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, July 13th, 2020 at 7:05 PM via a virtual Zoom meeting to consider the application of the trustees of the reservations regarding the property located at Seven Chestnut Hill Road for major site plan approval. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing limitations on in-person gatherings. There will be no in-person attendance by the public persons wishing to participate in this meeting while in progress may do so by going online to HTTPS www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. These hearings concern a proposal to reconstruct a salvage farm on the property with installation of a septic system and utilities. The project also includes updates to handicap accessibility, small modifications to existing parking and updates to site lighting. Copy of the plans and application may be reviewed on the planning board's webpage. HTTPS www.southboroughtown.com/planningboard. Donald C. Morris, Chair, Planning Board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Give us the background, what's led up to tonight's hearing?
Sure. So back in February of 2020, the proponent had an informal meeting with the planning department. We reviewed the application so that it would be complete for submission. The applicant and their team, so the trustees of reservations, hired DGT associates as their engineering firm to assist. And on March 5th, 2020, they provided submission number one with plans dated March 5th, 2020, and stormwater calculations dated March 5th, 2020. On March 16th, we requested some supplemental information regarding some fixes to the application and a certificate of authority for the trustee's signature on the application, the person who signed that. Then, as you know, that was right when the coronavirus pandemic started to hit the municipal services and the process was stayed by the planning board. So we did not file the application until June 22nd with the town clerk so that we could get things moving ahead. We learned the process of how to Zoom video and at a point we got comfortable, we wanted to make sure that we could have decent access to the meetings. Then the application was received, distributed to Fussin O'Neil and the town departments, as well as to the planning board members. The legal ad was posted in the newspaper and was published on June 29th and July 6th for a public hearing opening this evening on July 13th. The legal ad was provided to the applicant who submitted it to the abutters on the certified abutters list. We received green cards and white mailing receipts for the abutters. The planning department also mailed out the letters, the legal notice to the towns and agencies as required. On Friday, we received a review of this submission from Fussin O'Neil, a draft in order to give us some information. And then today, we were provided an updated draft that was a finalized draft, which was submitted to town, to planning board, the applicant. We also received comments from the fire department on June 25th, which were posted on the website as well as under the public hearing notice area of the planning board website. The applicant also submitted for stormwater management permit to conservation, which was heard on July 9th, last Thursday, at which they were approved. And that brings us to this evening, the opening of the public hearing for the project. We do have attendees in the waiting room for presentation of their plans. And with us waiting to be upgraded onto the panel is Bob Murray with the trustees of reservation. We also have Bert Corey, who represents DGT Associates, the engineering surveying company that's preparing the plans. So, Don, back to you.
Very good. Any questions or comments at this point before we ask the proponent to present? Seeing none?
Mr., sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Stein.
Yeah, just want to disclose that we're members of the CSA. So we get vegetables and stuff from there. So if anybody has, you know, is concerned about apparent conflict, I don't see any conflict. But if any of the fellow board members of the public feel I should recuse, just let me know. That's it. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I'm also a member of the CSA and of the trustees, but I don't think that that poses a conflict. And I can rule in an unbiased manner.
So I agree, but could you just tell us in the public what that membership consists of?
So in our case, we get produce from the proponent once a week, various types of vegetables, sometimes ice cream, if I pick it up.
That you pay for.
That's correct. Yes, there's, I'm financially, you know, a client. But I'm not, you know, financially in partnership with the proponent in any way. And I feel that I can, you know, participate on a fair and unbiased basis.
Mr. Chairman, I also get vegetables once a week, but I do not pick up ice cream, pay for or not.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we go to, is it Mr. Murray?
Yes, Bob Murray is with the trustees of reservations. I just want to explain that DA Hayden recently was incapacitated with some surgery for her knee, so she's not able to attend. And she let us know that we're in good hands with Bob Murray and Bert Corey.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Bob Murray. I'm with the trustees of reservations. I serve as a project manager for them. With me is Bert Corey from DGT and Mike Francis, who is our stewardship manager. So we would just like to say we're very grateful for this opportunity to be before you. This have been sort of uncertain times and we greatly appreciate under the unique circumstances, the ability to move this forward. So thank you very much for this opportunity. Our work at Chestnut Hill Farm is really part of our overall strategic plan as an organization. We're trying to elevate the agricultural experiences. We feel there are unique opportunities among our farm properties to engage people in a deep and more meaningful way, fostering a better understanding and appreciation for the local farms and how they can be a community resource, a source for farm fresh food, preserving traditional land use and the overall character of the community, but also offering a variety of farm-based programs and experiences that allows for this deeper connection to a variety of audiences. So we're very excited about this opportunity, particularly with the historic barn from Deerfoot Road. The timber frame has been restored and is waiting to be sort of erected on our site and to really help preserve some of Southborough's agricultural legacy in sort of a next phase of its life. So we're very excited about that. And we've been using a tent for our engagement programming. And that has been somewhat limited in what we can do. It's very weather dependent. So we see that this enclosed building will really provide new opportunities for us and will be able to provide some basic amenities that we hope will help enhance the visitor experiences and encourage longer stays on the property. So what I'd like to do is just highlight some of the key elements of the plan and
Bob, can I interrupt for one second? Would you like Mike Francis elevated to the panelist level?
Yes, please. He would be able to answer any questions you may have as well.
Sarah, do you see him in the attendees? Mike Francis?
Yes, I do now.
Okay. And then also Bob, will Bob be sharing the screen or are we, are you going to do that, Sarah?
I'm prepared to do that, but if, you know, if the speaker wants to drive, I mean, that makes a lot of sense too. So either way.
Bob, are you prepared to share your screen with the plans?
I am not. I would appreciate the help.
Ready. Okay, then.
Just give me one second here.
Yeah, with the, sometimes the upload is a little bit slower because when we work out of our home, where the VPN connection takes a little bit longer to launch the file.
Bob, is this the first time that you've done a site plan on Zoom?
Yes, it is.
It's our first time too, so.
That's reassuring. Thank you.
Yeah. We'll see if we can make it work. I was hoping you'd say, no, no, you've done several of these, but I guess everything is new now, so. We'll see how it goes.
Yeah.
Should be coming through. Can everybody see?
It's starting to share, Sarah. It's started sharing. It's probably a decent sized file. Yes. So it's about six megabytes, so it might take a little bit.
Karina, if you would like, I could begin sort of our presentation and then I think Bert could answer a lot of the technical questions. It might be benefited more from the plan than my opening remarks here.
Absolutely.
I can also try to share my screen too. I have the drawings up on my computer, so if that helps, I don't, I don't know.
Oh, that's you, Bert, right?
Yes.
Calling in with the phone. All right, let's see. Give it a second. Nothing yet, Sarah.
I'm actually very happy to hear that you can hear me because at the Conservation Commission hearing that we had last Thursday, my audio is not working. Evidently, I got it working now.
Okay, good. Are you also called in with your phone?
No, I'm not called in with the phone. I'm on the computer.
Oh, okay. Uh-oh. Sarah, the recording stopped.
It looks like she's off.
Okay, she'll be back. So Don, you are currently a co-host? Can you hear me, Don? So you're currently a co-host. All right. Here with us. We'll get this going.
Well, if Bob thinks that he can start without, why don't we?
Okay, it's recording again. We just had to wait for the recording to start again. So it shut off the recording and now it picked it up again. All right, good. Just give Sarah a chance.
I think we should let Bert share if he can.
Yeah.
Let me give that a shot right now.
Okay. There we go.
This is the overall view. It's a fairly large site. It's 108 acres. So I think people are somewhat familiar with this site, but I'll let, I'll let Bob talk through it. And Bob, if you start seeing a particular, you know, areas, then I can, I can try to point to whichever area you're talking about.
Well, I think this is a good screen to start on. The new barn that we're proposing for the site is really 1,900 square feet. The footprint of the old barn is about 1,200 square feet and we're looking at a 700 square foot lean-to addition on the south side of the building. The addition will have a public restroom and an office. So we're looking at a new septic system to be installed to support the building and the Board of Health has approved our plans for that. We also have plans to remove two of the existing buildings on the site. One is an old tool shed, right where Bert is pointing, and then further down was the old goat barn. Both of these buildings are in poor condition and no longer really serve the useful needs of the property. The placement of the barn on the site was very deliberate. We're introducing a new structure that will be in keeping with the general character of the farm. We're clustering the buildings to help preserve the iconic views across the fields. And there's a symbiotic relationship between the engagement barn and the existing CSA and farm stand. So they will both be sort of our public face to the people and so they needed to be in close proximity to each other. We hope to have sort of a courtyard space between those two buildings that people can spell out to and gather. We have presented this overall plan to the Conservation Commission that holds the CR on the property last fall, and they have approved this, that it is consistent with the general purpose of the conservation restriction in line with those restrictions. We've made some minor adjustments to the two parking lots, really trying to reconfigure them just slightly so that they meet the dimensional requirements. And then we've added on the southern one, two new ADA parking spaces to that. We've also supported a brand-new universal trail from the parking area to the barn and retail area. And have put also in terms of parking, sort of the back of the house on the southern end of the farmstead there, we have six additional spaces that we've delineated within the the sort of back of the house, not open to the public for staff use. And let's see, we've got some minimal landscape lighting to help just provide. Most of our programming is not at night, but there are some transitions at the end of the event. And so there's some, some night compliant, dark sky compliant lighting fixtures, bollards along the pathway. And providing some new sort of drainage swales to help mitigate the stormwater. And the, as mentioned, the Conservation Commission has approved our stormwater management permit last Thursday. So that's kind of the bigger overview. And if there's any more specific details, or Bert, if you want to touch on some of the details of the plans, otherwise we can also take questions if that's more efficient.
I don't mind going through a little bit more of the details.
Please, please do that.
Okay. So the screen that I'm sharing right now is just an enlargement of the overview that we were looking at earlier. So here's the barn that Bob was just discussing. Here's the the handicap accessible walkway that goes along an existing pathway that tractor uses today, but they won't be using that in the future, heading out to this, this small parking area. Right now, it's an existing gravel parking area. I'm just trying to go along the outline of this gravel area. What we're doing is essentially almost reconfiguring it, making it a little bit smaller. We're actually reducing it by about 700 square feet. And then using the dimensional regulations, we're setting the parking spaces as someone would be pulling in there. We also looked at trying to adjust some of the minor grading out at the entrance to this now. In today's, today's rainstorm, some of the rain can run down this swale into here, get to the opening and then start running across this gravel parking area. So what we're proposing is just to do a slight berm in this area, just to keep that water from running across the gravel parking area. The water that does run across the gravel parking area, we're proposing a riprap line swale. It's about six feet wide, only about four inches deep. I mean, it's something that vehicles could actually pass over it if they needed to pass over it. But the purpose of that is really to just trap any kind of, you know, sediment that could come off of the gravel parking area. The gravel parking area exists today. We really don't see a lot of, a lot of erosion on the side of the area right now, as well as sediment. So this is, this is more of a precautionary. It allows us to see any sediment that could be building up. It would also prevent any type of rutting because in this area here, we're proposing some overflow parking on the grass area. And if any cars started traveling across this, then we could start producing some ruts. So we put that in just as a, kind of a preventative, preventative way of just getting some rutting in through here. Let's see, moving to the north a little further, whoops, sorry. This is also an existing gravel slash dirt parking area today. This is the trailhead entrance for some of the trails that head out over the, over the farm area. Again, we're just proposing to modify this area. We actually have to make this slightly larger. And when I say slightly, it's the additional 1,800 square feet of impervious area. We need to do that in order to meet the dimensional standards for parking. And while we're doing that, I mean, because we are increasing the amount of gravel parking area, we're proposing a sediment forbay here. Actually, we're not really trying to change too much of the grade. We're trying to keep it as it is. This happens to be the low area in there anyway. So what we're doing is we're going to allow the water to come down. We'll pass it through a sediment forbay for pretreatment and then into a wet swale, where there's a little bit more detention. It also allows some infiltration. And it provides a certain amount of water quality. This isn't a paved surface. It's still a gravel surface, but it's still still a benefit, still improving the existing conditions. The reason why we're not going with, with really deep structures here and infiltration structures in this general area, as well as the, the other parking area, is the groundwater table is relatively high. We've got a lot of testing throughout this, this area and through here. And we've seen the groundwater table anywhere from 15 inches below grade to three feet below grade, based on modeling, based on water that's been weeping into the deep observation holes as well as standing water. So we know we have a relatively high groundwater table in that area. So we're, we're just trying to do what we can to try to incorporate some infiltration. Also too, as part of a low-impact development standpoint, we have a large grass area here that ultimately goes into a farm field. We have a, a large, uh, grass area here that ultimately goes, uh, into a farm field. It ultimately goes into a larger farm field that ultimately then travels down towards, uh, Route thirty. Uh, there's about two thousand linear feet of, of travel distance, uh, between this area and where it would actually pass on the Route thirty. When we modeled this hydraulically, we found that, uh, there'd be a slight increase in the peak flows, but there'd be a reduction in the volume. But that pe, that increase in the peak flow is it really held on to the, the site. It's in its own ponding areas. There's some small depressions in this area. I say small, but they're, they're wide and, uh, shallow and expansive in this area. You would see that if you were standing in like this general area. For the roof of the barn area, we are on higher ground up here where all of the, uh, the houses and the, uh, the outbuildings and the, the the barn facility is proposed, uh, and where the, uh, the septic system is also proposed. We had a test pit into this general area here, so we are proposing to, um, infiltrate the roof runoff into the, uh, into the ground through a, uh, fifteen-inch perforated ATB pipe surrounded with stone. Uh, that meets the, uh, the recharge requirements for that, as well as the water quality volume. As Bob already mentioned, the, uh, the septic system has, has been, uh, been approved by the, uh, the Board of Health. Um, in total, when we look at everything going on in this site, um, on balance, if we're just looking at rough numbers, we have an increase in impervious cover, uh, meaning roof, uh, of about five hundred square feet. And we have an increase in, um, the gravel parking area by eleven hundred square feet. Not a, not a significant amount of, uh, of increase, especially given that it's, uh, it's a hundred and eight acres in size. Uh, so that's, that's generally the overall plan. Uh, we did receive the, uh, the site plan review from the Fire Department, and I'll, I'll be happy to go through that. As, and we also received the, uh, the letter from Fuss and O'Neil, and I can go through that too. But before I get into those two documents, um, you know, maybe if you have any questions at this point, it might be a good time to just, uh, go through those questions.
Does the board prefer to, um, let, uh, Bert continue with the, uh, Fire Department letter and the Fuss and O'Neil letter, or do we have questions now? I think we should let him continue to present.
I agree.
Okay.
John, can I make one comment, um, which may be of significance? Part of the Fuss and O'Neil review, there was, um, a question as to whether a special permit for lower impact development would be required. Um, and as, you know, the plans are presented, it may be important to maybe discuss that upfront because you put another, you know, kind of concept in your head when you're looking through the plans and they're explained to you of, you know, the things you look for. So, um, I don't know, Bert, if you had a chance to fully go through the Fuss and O'Neil comments, but one of the comments was that the area of disturbance, um, triggers the threshold is beyond, over the threshold of one acre, which triggers lower impact development special permit. So.
I did have a chance to look at the, the Fuss and O'Neil. We actually prepared an area of disturbance exhibit plan. Um, I don't think you got that when we submitted the site plans, although that was generated back on April twenty-fourth. It went in with the, uh, the stormwater permit application. Uh, so we do have a, uh, a drawing that, that delineates the, uh, the entire project. And the, the total area disturbance is thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one.
Okay.
It's just under that. But, I mean, that's something that I can, I can show to you. I can, I can email to you. I could email it to you right now if you want.
Yeah, we'll have to clarify it because it's important, uh, because it's a separate permit if it is required. It's my understanding in conversation with Fuss and O'Neil that, um, they calculated from measuring, um, off the plans, forty-seven thousand square feet of disturbance. And an acre is forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty. Um, so we'll need to come to terms with that. Because it does make a big difference. And, um, also to point out that during the conservation's review for stormwater management permit, uh, the hydraulic, uh, the stormwater calculations were not reviewed by Fuss and O'Neil. They were re-reviewed by Commission Member Ben Smith, uh, who's a professional engineer. So, um, part of Fuss and O'Neil, O'Neil's response was, um, do we fully review the plan, the stormwater report calculations in a lid sense or not? And I told them to, um, to review them in engineering standard, but not in, uh, complete stormwater policy compliance. So that if your lid is not required, we weren't spending that money on that review if it's not necessary. So we'll have, you know, it's important to determine if a lid is required or not.
Correct. Uh, actually, Ben had some good questions, too, so. That, that makes sense. I didn't know that he was a PE, but, uh, that makes sense. So anyways, let's, uh, I'll work through the, the Fuss and O'Neil letter. Um, of course, what we will end up doing is, is resubmitting a response letter, uh, to the Fuss and O'Neil letter. And I will ask if I can get the Word document, just so that I have all of those items on there. And then I can respond to each item individually with how the plans have either been revised or any type of discussion point. And I think, you know, as far as any discussions, I don't know if we need to do that through, uh, maybe through you, Karina, through emails or paperwork, or if there's, if there's any way where there can be some direct communication. And maybe even you being part of that conversation would be good, just to, just to be able to flesh out anything, you know, uh, with a two-way conversation rather than just passing information back on, on letters and emails.
Yeah, sure, that works. Um, it, it's good to, we all hear at the same time, um, Fuss and O'Neil and firemen involved in the calls and the emails. That way we can, um, like you said, flesh out the, make sure we get the answers and the responses and any new questions. Help resolve it faster.
Sure, sure. Okay.
If I, if I could just ask the board, there's twenty-nine items in the Fuss and O'Neil, uh, letter. Is it the, does the, does the board want to go through these tonight? Or as Bert suggested, and as we've seen in other site plans, when the, um, some of these technical engineering items are, uh, resolved between the two engineers, then we get into what's left after that. Decision points like, do we, do we, um, do we think that, uh, a lid is required and so on? So is, does the board want to go through the twenty-nine items tonight, or?
I don't think we need to do that. Do not.
Anyone else?
I, I just had a, a couple of questions about the Fuss and O'Neil. But I think we can wait until there's a actual response. And then address it at another meeting.
So why don't we do that, Bert? We'll, we'll, um, not get into that level of detail into each, each of the twenty-nine items. Um, maybe I'll just open it up to the board. Um, I think we've all read the Fuss and O'Neil letter, even though we just got it, I think this morning. But, and just open up the questions and see where that takes us. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Is that Mr. Mills?
Yes. Well, first, is Bob and, and team, are, are they done with their presentation?
Yes, I think, believe we are at this point, or we're open for questions.
Yeah, although I would just like to clarify that I wasn't really intending on going through each and every, uh, line item in the letter. I was thinking that the response letter would be more appropriate, um, so that ultimately we get a, a clean letter back from Fuss and O'Neil saying that we've addressed all the items, uh, so that we can share that with you. Uh, but they did have some good points in there. And as Karina mentioned, you know, there was, it, it does bring up a discussion point about the lower impact development. Uh, they also had a couple of other good points in there too, uh, but I'll, I'll leave it alone. I would like to say too, though, that I did, uh, review, um, a fire truck turning, uh, exhibit plan with Lieutenant Dano, as well as go through the, uh, the site plan review, uh, letter that was produced from them. And, uh, uh, there's actually two things that we would like to do to the plans, uh, that, that, that he's requesting. And one of them is to put in a no parking sign, and the other one is to put in a sign that says number seven Chestnut and number nine Chestnut Hill Road. Uh, otherwise, we're, we're, we're all set with the South Row Fire Department.
Bert, are those turning radius drawings something you can provide us for our file?
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Andrew?
Yeah, so, uh, Bert and Bob, can you just show me on the map, like, the, the buildings where visitors without coronavirus in place and everything, where you see that they would congregate? Uh, for the most part. I get the barn is going to be one, but also where they pick up, the pickup for, uh, vegetables and meats and everything now.
That's right.
That's the other building right across from it, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
And can you show me, sorry?
All right, so obviously there's a, a lot of, uh, foot traffic in, for the CSA pickup, as well as, uh, sort of the farm stand that's open to everyone. Um, and we're hoping to, uh, also have this sort of space between there where there's currently asphalt, but, uh, creating sort of a courtyard space between those two buildings. The, uh, restrooms would be open to the general public at all times. So anyone coming, any families coming to pick up their, um, pickup can also, uh, spend some time congregating or ju, enjoying the site. So I guess it depends on the activities of the day, whether there's an actual pickup, whether it's simply retail, uh, sales, or if there's a program.
So are you going to remove that road that goes down along the, the existing?
That, that will no longer be used for, um, by the ag tractors. That will be pedestrian only.
I'm, I'm thinking to the south.
Pardon me, I'm sorry. Oh, further down.
Well, no. Yeah, right there.
This is the main driveway coming into the site today.
So, and I, I've cut right to the chase, right? I, I, it looks like there's a lo, very long distance from the new barn to the handicap spots or the ADA compliance spots. Uh, and where the existing building is where people go, uh, to pick up meats and, and vegetables and everything too. It just seems like a, a very long distance for someone who has a, um, struggle, struggles to get up there, um, to go. Personally, I think it would be great to see a couple of parking spots closer to those two buildings for ADA. The, so, I, I don't know, it doesn't look like there's anything currently there or planned to be right near the buildings, but ideally, something in that area would probably be great. Um, the other thing for the proposed barn, again, I know I, I saw the plans and everything. We didn't go through it for anyone else who's watching, but, you know, it shows tables in there. There's, there's no proposal to actually have animals living in the barn, correct?
That's correct.
So would that be okay to be a condition of, uh, the permit? That no animals would be, uh, housed in the barn?
We're, we're fine with that condition.
Although there might be some animals being served in the barn.
I mean, living, you know what I mean? I mean, that when the, the original property got approved and everything, I think there were some specific restrictions, as I recall, on what type of animals could be on the, the, uh, the property, what, um, you know, how many additional buildings could be added and things like that. So just, you know, in keeping in line with that, if, if the proposal for this quote barn, right? Because it is a barn, is that it's going to be used for, you know, hosting events for people and interaction, but not actually housing animals in there. I think would be, could be clear on that with the, uh, approvals.
If I may, this is Mike Francis, uh, Storage Ship Manager, um, at the farm with the trustees. Uh, to the two points that, uh, that Andrew's brought up, um, the accessibility, you know, we did look at a couple of options. Uh, we currently is, uh, at times are able to accommodate someone with an accessibility need, um, in the, um, what we would call like the, the back of house, uh, maintenance entrance. Um, in part because we don't, you know, currently have a suitable path, um, to really accommodate that. But what we're really looking to do is to separate, uh, the two components of, of the farm. Uh, you know, the back of house, maintenance, uh, equipment area, um, from the, you know, visitor, the visitor interface, you know, the area that, the place that they arrive, they park and they walk up. I believe, um, you know, Burke can kind of, um, confirm the distance here, but I believe that this, you know, distance and of course, the, the grade, the five percent slope, uh, does meet the accessibility guidelines. Bert, I'm not sure if we, if we have a distance, um, both on.
No, I, I can get a distance.
It, it is less than five percent, so as far as accessible route, uh, it does meet that.
But we certainly, you know, want, want to be, uh, sensitive to the needs of, of all of our visitors to the farm as well. So, um, we, you know, maintain a, a close, uh, relationship with our guests and certainly look to accommodate, um, any additional special needs as well. Um, also to, uh, your second point, uh, about animals, um, in the barn here. You know, it's really not our intention by any means to use this, you know, as a livestock barn. But I just would like to make the point that there may be a program, um, a kids' class or something where, you know, we may bring an, an, an animal, be it like a small bunny, a chicken or something into that barn, but it's not one to house animals, um, you know, feed animals, leave them there overnight, et cetera.
And that's, that's what I'd be looking for. I, I understand that you probably bring animals in for, you know, it's raining out or whatever program you bring them in, but a couple of afros, kids get them or whatever. Or even they get fed there for a brief period. They're not going to be bred and kept there on a regular basis overnight for, you know, living in the barn.
Correct.
About a hundred and ninety feet approximately.
Yeah, and I, I'm not, I'm sure it's in compliance with ADA and everything, but if you, uh, think from a practicality standpoint, if you have a pathway or a driveway near it and everything, I think it's, uh, it would just be best for someone who does have issues walking, that we get it as close as possible. Those are my comments for now, Mr. Chairman.
And I think you were about to say that you're going to take a look at that.
That's correct.
Okay. Anyone else on the board? Questions or comments?
Uh, I had a quick question regarding parking. So how many spots, how many parking spots are there currently?
There are, um, twenty-two spaces, uh, that meet the South Row dimensional requirements in the two gravel parking areas. So the, the closest one that you see is eleven today, and it'll be eleven tomorrow. The one further to the north at the trailhead, the only, we can only fit eleven cars in here that meet the dimensional requirement. By making it wider and a little bit longer, we can fit, uh, twenty-four. That brings us up to the thirty-five parking spaces. And then there's six spaces on the, uh, you know, the main entrance coming into seven and nine.
Right, so twenty-two currently, and how many are proposed?
There's twenty-two plus some ad hoc parking in, into this area here. We're proposing forty-one in total. So we've got eleven at the first parking area. We'd have twenty-four at the, the most northerly parking area. So that brings us to thirty-five. And then we would, we would strike the three parallel parking spaces along the edge of pavement here. And then we're also proposing to cut a small amount of this landscape area to put three spaces here. These primarily would be used by the employees of the, of the farm.
So you're going from twenty-two to forty-one?
Uh, that's correct, although like I said, there's some, there's some parking in here that might be a little bit haphazard today. This would, they're not strike today, so I think people do park along here. And they park right at the edge of this, of this grass area. So I can't tell you that there's existing six spaces there, but there's, there's enough for six. So I can't tell you that there's existing six spaces there, but there's there's enough for six spaces. So, you know, I would say that we're starting with twenty-eight and we're going to forty-one.
Okay, it just it it did strike me when I was looking at the plans as a significant increase in parking. And um you had said you you went through this stuff with Conservation Commission and that um they were satisfied that it was in compliance with the conservation restriction. But um, I don't know, I just thought I would raise it as a as a point of concern for the next meeting is to, you know, maybe just address why we're we're taking, we're adding so much parking to the site.
Let's base on your zoning, actually. The zoning requirements require uh there's 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 eight, I'm sorry, there's twelve tables, eight people per table. So there's ninety-six occupants that could be sitting down at a meal in the barn. And the zoning requires uh one space for every three of those occupants. So that brings us up to thirty-two. And then there's there's employee parking. And then there's which uh requires three spaces. And then as part of the, there's a a retail barn. Yeah, wait one second. This barn right here is part of an operation where you go in and you buy vegetables. Being retail, uh that requires a six additional spaces because of the uh the square footage that barn. So the zoning requires us to go to forty-one.
If I may add to that as well, the trailhead uh parking lot, the northern parking lot. Currently about, you know, up to twenty vehicles park in that lot, just not kind of dimensionally, right? Not meeting the dimensional requirements of what parking spaces um should be. So um essentially, we fit about twenty cars in there. And um this would bring it into compliance to uh to make sure that the cars have the adequate spacing.
Bert and Mike, if I may, do the um Bert, do the um overflow parking spaces, that's not included in your forty-one spaces, right?
That's correct.
Any anyone else? Questions or comments?
I have questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Littrell?
The first one is, when did um Fussin O'Neil receive the plans?
They received them, hold on. You want a second? On June twenty-fourth.
And were they, were they open then?
They are working remotely as well.
Okay.
They're not back to their offices yet.
It it just would be more efficient if we received their comments earlier so that they can intercept them earlier and have their responses that for the the meeting.
Yeah, we always strive to do that. It's a tough schedule for two weeks. Especially in these conditions.
Yeah, I understand that. Um, my next question is, do we have um written confirmation for the Conservation Commission that um as the holders of the CR that this project uh meets the requirements of the conservation restriction? Just for our records, I know they approved the storm water and that would be assumed, but I would feel better if we had that written confirmation for our record.
Are you asking me, Mimi, or are you asking the applicant?
Um, I'm at, well, I guess I'm asking you.
Okay, just want to make sure. Yeah, as a matter of fact, I also wanted to point out that the the parking area at the trailhead. There is a town that the town of Selco has an easement on that lot for parking. And the deed reference on the plan, I believe, and Bert, you can correct me if I'm wrong, goes back to the conservation restriction document. Uh, so there's some language related to that. But yes, we can definitely request from Conservation Commission to provide um some feedback in a letter format or a memo indicating that they are um on board with the project as far as the conservation restriction is concerned. Okay.
Bob might already have that too. I'm not sure. I can't speak for Bob. Bob, do you do you have a document like that from Conservation? I know you met with them early on.
We met with him last fall and this question did come up at the um on Thursday's meeting. And Melissa was going to look back in the minutes to document that um that was in fact approved uh by the Conservation Commission. We had provided them a new spreadsheet in accounting of the square footage and had provided the overall um plan for them. So um we can certainly work with um Melissa in Conservation to um try to uh see that reflected in in their minutes and share that as a record.
And I did see a copy of that. Um, I think sometime last year, the those calculations that are required when anything changes um on the farm related to the conservation restriction. I'm just not sure if it included um the slightly expanded trail parking lot in addition to, you know, the walkway from the smaller lot that's proposed for the for the barn reconstruction. So um Melissa keeps very good records. We'll 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 try and touch base with her. We will touch base with her.
Okay, uh, my next questions, were there some notes on the plans um that concern me that there, the plan should be considered conceptual and the intent is for permitting only and shall not be used for construction purposes? My understanding is the site plan is what should, what we approve is what should be built and that it should be a definitive plan and not a conceptual plan. And there was the same disclaimer on lighting that it was not intended for construction.
Yeah, first off, I'll I'll answer the question with regards to the site plan. That's a uh, that's a standard note that seems to raise issues all the time. Uh, and at the point where I'm just, I don't want to even put that on the plans anymore. Essentially, what that means is when we're doing larger projects, there's a permitting set, but then we end up going through uh once we're past the design development, we get into actual construction documents. And it's the construction documents that are that are built or off of the permit set that have even more detail on them. So that a contractor knows exactly what he's going to be building. That typically gets submitted into the the building department. And then that gives them at least one last look at between what was submitted as a construction drawing to the the permit set. But I will take that note off. I don't have an issue with that at all.
Okay, good. That would make me feel better. My next question, so Fussin O'Neil had some questions on lighting and I was equally confused by what the fixtures were and how many lumens. And so I'll I'll wait for the answers on that. But I will say that the um, the parking lot lights um are twenty feet tall.
Twelve feet tall. I I believe the plan is for twelve feet tall.
Yeah, we show on our plan that they're fifteen.
So, well, on the lighting, well, so I'll wait for the answers then. So there's confusion there because on the description it said twenty feet and uh it's not a Walmart parking lot. It's surrounded by open space, so we should uh be cognizant of the wildlife. And how many trees are going to be removed?
In in terms of um the apple trees are, we're uh making, we've sort of shifted the whole building site to save the chestnut trees that are present on site. Uh, but I think there's um four to five apple trees that would be removed.
Okay, can can it be shown on the plan that the chestnut trees are going to be preserved and in which apple trees are going to be removed?
Sure, we can highlight that so that it's seen in the plan.
And I was also concerned about the long distance from the handicap parking lot and whether a wheelchair could maneuver that gravel lot.
We um, the specs that we've used at other sites and other municipalities been uh three eights minus a hard pack um which has been used in um to meet ADA compliance.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, Marty Houlihan.
Mrs. Houlihan.
Yeah, so I would say that my fellow planning board members covered most of the bases. I did have a question on the the landscaping plan and I saw there was going to be a request for um without a landscaping plan. But to to Mimi's same point about understanding about what trees would be removed, there's obviously will be disturbance on the property. And I think having some understanding of what the intent will be. I I think it's hard to suggest a waiver without really understanding with clarity what's happening to the area and what the disturbance would be. And I really couldn't call that out with the existing paperwork that we had been provided.
Fair enough. We we can certainly provide greater clarity on that.
Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
Bob, can I add one thing just real quickly?
Yeah, go ahead.
Make a difference. Um, one of the things was um the the zone that the the um project is in, I believe it's the scientific research and professional operations zoning district, is that correct, Bert?
That's correct.
All right, and um it was just concern that what the barn will actually be used for, if it's going to, you know, just be aware that there was a question. And I would guess that the planning board might condition the uses there to make sure that they fall within the district um allowed uses. That's all I had. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't missed.
Thank you. I just had a couple of uh, I think, comments. I think Fussin O'Neil pointed out that the parking areas uh by code should be paved. And but said that it's up to the board to waive that, and I would certainly be in favor of waiving and keeping all of the parking lots gravel and minimize the amount of impervious and paved and paved paved areas uh throughout. Also uh in favor of reduced or very much reduced landscaping in order to, as as the letter says, uh, you know, the uh the farm look, the open fields and um the the look of a farm rather than of a um a landscaped uh facility. Um, and I may have missed this, but was there any information provided relative to the current number of car trips that the facility that the operations there generate per day and what the projected car trips would be?
Yeah, I I don't believe we captured that, any data on that.
I think when you come back, we'd like to get a feel for that. As you know, uh, the other end of the street, there's uh houses being built in the former cornfield at the corner there. And the way the uh traffic is meant to flow uh in and out of there will add certainly add car trips to uh to the to the road. And then those should be uh factored in just to get a an understanding of how much uh of a change in in vehicle traffic there will be on that road and uh be able to uh think that it's okay or realize that uh something has to be changed. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have one more.
Mr. Mills.
So Bert, can you go back to where the existing barn is, is going to be raised? I think there's a note on that saying for uh over on one of the pages, is that right?
You're talking about this one right here? Mike, did you see the screen?
Uh, it was a different.
Talking about the goat barn?
Yeah. And it says all affirmative employee parking, nine spaces. My only concern is if you're really going to do that, I think you should have how you're going to get the cars over there and what the line should be and everything. Correct me if I'm wrong, Karina, but I don't know how you're gonna have parking if there's no way to get there.
Yeah, it appears that there's an existing edge of pavement that leads down to the northeast corner, but um it's not defined as an area of disturbance or if it's going to be improved in order, there's no parking spaces defined size wide. Well, they are described eight, nine and a half by eighteen. But it doesn't show any striping for an aisle or how they're continuing.
That was just a thought moving forward. If we ever had to, you know, based on our discussions, if we ever had to move any any parking down in that area, you know, we would look at it at that time. I think we could probably take that note off.
Yeah, I'd probably be in favor of that. That was it. Thank you.
Anything else? Is there anyone from the public? That would like to have a question or a comment? Do we have anyone from the public, Sarah?
Uh, I don't see anyone from the public here for this particular uh public hearing.
Currently, I just point out that it's John Wood, Peter Bemis and Sam Stivers is in the attendee list. And um you can just check the chat real quick if any of them have asked to comment.
I I don't see any raised hands or any chat at the moment.
Okay.
Seeing seeing none, um, I think we've covered a lot of ground tonight, made some good progress. And uh seem to be all kind of moving in the same direction to make this a better plan, a better project. So uh, I guess it would be appropriate at this time to continue the public hearing to a future date. Karina, would it be August tenth at seven, seven oh five?
August tenth at seven oh five.
Um, yeah, actually, uh, on the lid, let's go back to that because that's a separate public hearing uh that hasn't been advertised. So um, and I believe we heard a commitment that the two engineers will uh huddle up and either agree on the uh that trigger point of one acre, whether it's less than that and no lid is required, or if it's more than that and a waiver is required. And from my point of view, when I was looking at this, uh, I felt that if it was close, I mean, if it's uh a few hundred or a few thousand square feet over the acre, based on the the nature of the site, which is wide open. I I just feel that a a permit for the lid, obviously, if it's under the acre, then you're all set. If it's a little bit over, I would lean toward uh waiving that requirement. I'm not sure about the rest of the board. The board wants to comment on that. But yeah, it's possible that if a lid is required, then we'd have to advertise of a public hearing for that special permit and then hold a s- uh a separate hearing as we do for all all lid uh special permits.
I'd be in favor of what you just said, Mr. Chairman, under those conditions.
So let's let's um hope that uh the uh the lid is not required. If it is, then we'll 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 see where that takes us. But for now, we have this public hearing to continue to seven oh five on August tenth, Karina?
That's correct.
Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I might make a motion. We continue the public hearing for Chestnut Hill Farm Barn, August tenth um at seven oh five PM.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Littrell, yes. Houlihan, yes.
Okay, we'll see you on August tenth. Thank you.
Much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Karina, next item on the agenda.
Next item on the agenda is an A and R for 145 and 153 Middle Road, prepared by Peter Bemis and his company. Give us a second to just pull that A and R plan up on the screen. Sarah, you think it will work? Can't hear you.
I hope so.
Okay. And while she's doing that, I'll give a quick update on that.
See, Peter has joined us. Good evening, Peter. Have to unmute.
Gotcha. Yeah, I did. Thank you.
Welcome. Karina, you're on.
Okay. All right, so about a week and a half ago, Peter Bemis provided an A and R plan for 145, 153 on Middle Road. And he met with me and we discussed a few revisions, which he then made and submitted a formal application, which was filed with the town clerk with a decision due date, 21 days would be July 28th. We can let Peter Bemis explain his plan if he's upgraded to a panelist, Sarah?
He is. He's all set.
All right. Peter, are you available?
Are you all set, Karina?
I am.
Okay, Peter, you're on.
All right, thank you, Karina. So this basically is three properties. One is a parcel, which is Daniel Fanif's. That is located furthest to the south or the left of the plan along Middle Road. Then it's the 153 Middle Road Realty Trust. That was land formerly of Stanley Tenonholdts. And land to the north, which is Ian and Andrea DeRice. So basically, these parcels are being reconfigured. 153 Middle Road Realty Trust has actually acquired the land of Mr. Fanis this past week. But you see that we're creating four independent lots that are all one acre or more with more than 150 feet of frontage on each lot. So complying with both the frontage and area requirements for land division. Wetlands are located to the south. That is the old trolley line that used to run right along Route 9 going east and west. And the barn on the Tenonholdts property, actually, the lot line comes through it for lots one and two. 153 house would be raised. The historical commission has reviewed that and already approved that demolition. Then 145 is shown to the north. That's the residence of Ian and Andrea DeRice. And that is going to be retained. And then you can see the leaching area is the furthest feature north. After you leave this property, you would go to the long Cadillac dealership to give you further orientation on where we are. To the west would be the land division that you recently entertained. It was leadsway by Bartolini Builders. And then again, east would be Middle Road. Plan notes, you see each lot is listed with its area and its frontage. Plan references are there. The three property owners books, pages, deeds, they're up, but assessors, map and parcel numbers are listed. And our zoning district is rezet. That's listed at the top of the sheet. Endorsement block is on the right and you don't make any zoning determinations with the plan. Building Department does that. You happy to answer any questions?
I'd also just like to quickly point out that name of the applicant is 153 Middle Road Realty Trust. All three owners of the property signed the application and we received a trustee certificate that the person signing for the Realty Trust is authorized to do so, which was also filed with the application with the, to the town clerk. Just want to make, point that out.
Yeah, when I went through the, those documents, it was a lot more than we usually see in order to follow who owns the land and so on. But with the, with all those references and the trustee certificate, it does seem to be complete, at least from my review. And you feel the same way, Karina?
I do. I also reviewed the plan thoroughly, along with Peter Bemis. And just want to point out also that Peter Bemis is representing Engineering Design Consultants who prepared the plan for recording secretary's benefit. Yeah, I reviewed it and it appears to be in order for the best of my knowledge.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I'm here.
No questions.
I'm all set. No questions.
Very good. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve the A and R request for 145 and 153 Middle Road. I guess Middle Road Realty Trust. As requested by.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes. Houlihan, yes.
Peter, this is not a dream. This is real. You actually, just a few minutes. It's great.
No, thank you very much, but I have to ask, I have to know where Mr. Mills is or he's got one hell of a good picture behind him.
Just a picture, just a picture.
Just a picture. Well, that is one nice picture. I haven't seen the waves move. That's why I was wondering where you were. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too, Peter. See you later.
Thanks, Peter.
Next item on the agenda, Karina.
Hold on. I lost my agenda. Give me one second. Next item on the agenda is, here it is. Sorry, I filed it.
Let's go back to the A and R. We just voted to approve that. So how are we going to sign it? The same way we did the last one?
Yes.
There was a mix of delivery and I think I signed it at the picnic table.
I'm happy to bring it around to whoever, you know, needs, needs it to be brought to their house.
I'll come in.
Or prefers.
Are you in tomorrow?
I am.
We just have to have a chance to prepare the, it's a simple form, the endorsement form that signs along with the plan getting signed. So once we have that done, we can do that pretty quickly. And Sarah, you can coordinate.
Yeah.
So each board member will probably give, you know, a call to arrange a time to go outside the town hall and sign it.
Sounds good.
Between thunderstorms. Okay, Karina, sorry.
Okay, no, that's okay. The next item on the agenda is a discussion item for the EDC Village Mixed Use District, known as V-MUD, bylaw status. And the panelists who are here are John Wood, who is Chair of the EDC, and also we have Sam Stivers listed here as attendees. So John Wood has been, yeah.
Sam would also be introduced as a selectman.
Yes, and Sam Stivers as a selectman. I, we need to find out if Sam wants to be elevated as a panelist, if he has input.
Wow, I have lovely lady here, sorry.
I don't see a request and he hasn't raised his hand, right?
I can send him in a chat. He said he's only here as an attendee in the chat.
Oh, well, thank you, Sam. We appreciate that. Okay. So Sarah, would you like to update the planning board on the status of what we've received from the EDC?
Um, we have received a third revision of the proposed zoning overlay, which was distributed to the board for review. And
and you have that, it's, you should have had access to seeing that. If you haven't had that, let us know. We can email it to you directly. It was a version two back at the end of June, right? If I'm not mistaken. And I believe the EDC's Chair, John Wood, if he's interested in adding any additional information under this discussion item, because I know he's on for the next item as well. John?
Mr. Chairman, would be okay if I spoke a little bit? I don't have a whole lot of information. I wasn't really prepared to to speak or answer questions on this, but I can tell you what I do know.
Good evening, John. Good to have you.
John Wood, Vice Chair, Acting Chair right now of the EDC, 10 Gilmore Road. I do know that this is the third version that went out on the 10th to everybody. This is one we're hoping to get some feedback for. This, the third version incorporates some of the feedback we've gotten from some of the other boards and committees, like open space and different things that we put into this. What else?
John, you had mentioned to me that this was a kind of a preliminary draft.
Exactly.
It may be going to a consultant.
We're talking about, per our attorney, they suggested that we might want to go to an outside planner to have review on that. So we're putting together a real quick RFP for that scaled down to go out hopefully soon. But if you guys, what would ideally like on this is if you guys could take a look at this and see if there's anything you hate, you like, you don't like, and just shoot us your questions on an email and writing so we can send that off to the consultant and the attorney for them to look at and go from there. But that's pretty much all I have on this. Do you have any specific questions? Maybe I can answer. I'm not going to pretend that I'm really up to date on this.
So this is still a preliminary.
Exactly, exactly. Because what are you guys scheduling your, your draft reviews? That can be on your August meeting? I'm assuming like August 10th around there?
That's our next meeting, yeah.
So by then I should have a.
You've asked us to do some homework and submit any questions or comments, which we would do through the town planner and send them on to you. If that's what you want.
That would be wonderful. That's what we're asking, yes.
Is that, does the board, is the board okay with that? Okay, that's what we'll do. Hopefully, well before the August 10th, maybe we'll set ourselves a deadline for those, that's submitted to the town planner. What do you think? A week, 10 days?
Sarah, if you have any suggestions as a timeframe, the planning board could respond to you?
Yeah, I think, you know, a week or two. And if everybody wants to send their comments and questions to me, I can kind of aggregate those together so that they all go off to Marika and the EDC as one kind of cohesive set of feedback.
Okay, and these would be questions or and or comments?
Yes, please.
Or even recommendations?
Yes, please.
Okay, anything else on this? Okay, let's move on to the next item.
Next item on the agenda is discussion with EDC regarding membership. And it's my understanding that the EDC is trying to reformat the number of members on their Economic Development Committee. So maybe John wants to elaborate.
I would. And I apologize for looking behind me. My dogs have been quiet the whole time I've been at this meeting. And now that I'm actually unmuted, I'm sure they're going to go crazy. And I apologize because one keeps looking at me. So I apologize. So in a nutshell, last month, the last Board of Selectments meeting, I had asked if they could change our committee size to seven from nine members because we're having problems getting a quorum. So they dropped it down to seven for us from the nine. We have six members currently. Optimus Bartolini stepped down, which is a big loss. So I had asked them if to, for a future consideration, I'd like to go back to a seven, a nine-member committee. And ideally, initially, I thought I wanted somebody from Advisory Board of Selectment as well as somebody from the Planning Board to, would have more of a collaborative effort moving forward. We're losing business to the towns around us on Route 9 and different things. And it would be great to have you guys' expertise on that. I, I asked the table the discussion. I said, you know, for future consideration, because I hadn't spoke with anybody from planning as of yet to see if it, you guys even had an appetite for doing that. But most of the successful community development, economic development, or viable towns around us, even in the state, they all have, the one thing in common, not all, but most had somebody from planning involved. The others had usually somebody from Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, Town Manager, somebody from Board of Selectment as well, because they want to talk to the movers and shakers. So ideally, I'd love to get back up to a nine-member board. I'd love to have the expertise of somebody from planning right there and then at our meetings. So if somebody comes in and complains that, it's, the permitting is too slow, it takes this and that. Like I know I've spoken with Sarah in the past. She's like, yeah, they'll say it's slow because they come in unprepared. They don't have this, they don't have that. It would be great to say, wow, this is what you needed. We can educate them and help them be more prepared for your meetings, which should hopefully help you guys up. Well, I'm not looking for, to say the town planner to do more heavy work for us or anything like that. I'm just looking for a voice from planning at the meetings with us at consistently. To ideally, personally, I would love it to be a voting member, somebody from the planning board because you're town residents. And that's why I want a selectman as well, because they could be a voting member. I didn't discuss that in length with the selectman. I have to put that all together, but I just wanted to get your feedback if it's something that anybody would be interested in. If you say no, John pound sand. But I just think if we could make a more collaborative effort with planning, other committees, the Board of Selectment Management, maybe we could draw more revenue, especially with the outlook of next year and the year after that, and the year after that in this town. So.
John, could you elaborate on advisory? You mentioned that advisory.
Advisory, advisory, I wanted to have an advisory member, but I can't because they're only allowed to be on one ad hoc committee apiece. And this is a formed committee that's appointed by the selectmen. So I can't have an advisory person. I don't know if I could have like a liaison, if that counts, but they couldn't be an official, official member. So advisory.
Has the Board of Selectmen assigned anybody?
I haven't even approached them to do that yet because without what I'm going to do at a future meeting with Board of Selectmen is I'm going to write up ideally how I'd like to use, if there was an appetite with anybody in planning, whether they'd want to be a voting member, non-voting member, whatever I can take from that. So I'm, I'm just humbly here asking you guys' help.
And would that have to go to town meeting?
Yes, I believe it would have to go to special town. Well, ideally, I'd like to have this proposed for the special town meeting in the fall. But I'm pretty sure that changing, dropping what they, maybe Sam could help me if I'm wrong in this. But dropping down was something they could do because the board is, it's up to nine members. But I don't know if they can, I think, I'm pretty sure because the bylaw needs to be through town meeting to be approved to have people from other boards on it and to be rewritten as seven members plus a Board of Selectmen members plus planning member or blah, blah, blah. So I'm pretty sure it would have to be voted on at town meeting. And I think it's just a majority vote for that. I don't believe it's a, I could be wrong.
Thank you.
John, there's concern, I think you're, based on your experience with other towns, saying that planning, at least from our point of view, planning plays a either an official role or at least an appearance role in the EDC. My concern is the planning board members, it's my opinion, should not be necessarily advocating for another board in this way. And I'm thinking that there are people, economic development people in town, who want more horsepower in that developed economic development. But there are other people who want more horsepower in open space or in recreation and other things. So I'm sure that there's a way to have us participate more. But I'm not sure if it will work to have a planning board member be also a member on economic development. And it's because it would show that And it's because it would show that or it could show that uh, the Planning Board or that board member is um advocating for more economic development, which would, may then be perceived as not supporting open space, not supporting what we always hear, which is if it's not broken, don't fix it. So I don't know how the rest of the board feels, or how, like you said, town meeting, how this would, would be accomplished, but I just know that if we start to have members on other boards, it's gonna create, um, I think, situations where there'll be a conflict. Anybody else with a an opinion on that?
I, I agree with you, Don. And also, John, unfortunately, I just don't have the bandwidth as well, so I, I'd be out either way.
So I, I actually um, think it would be a good idea, because as, as Mr. Wood said, it's so often at EDC meetings, he's getting feedback about the Planning Board and questions that are directly related to planning. I mean, if, you know, professionally, I wasn't in the middle of um, kind of a huge uh, boom in, in the business I'm in, I would actually consider volunteering for that, but I can't do it, as Mr. Mills just said for himself, I, I definitely don't have the bandwidth to take on um, a third board, because I'm on Shopsy as well. But I see, you know, my representation on Shopsy, most of the time just serves as, as informational representation of planning processes and uh, working with Karina and Sarah on, on Shopsy stuff, in a, in a way that I think would also be sort of beneficial for the EDC, so.
I agree.
Un- unlike, unlike um, Mr. Mills and Mr. um, Morris, I actually think Mr. Wood has a really good idea in, in having a Planning Board representative on EDC. But it can't be me, sorry.
That's a great idea, but you, not for me. Anyone else?
I, I'll comment, so I, I think, so my fear is that it, it would be perceived as um, a conflict of interest, but I think if there was a discrete role and responsibility of an informational-only role, um, like a non-voting, um, could provide information on, you know.
I'd be fine with ex officio. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, I, I think that would be, you know, I, I do think it, from an informational perspective, I think it would be helpful. But um, I, I do can't volunteer.
Sounds like you might, sounds like you might get, be getting a staff member.
I was trying, I, I'd be great with that as well, but I know the bandwidth of your staff members is, is limited as well, so I'm trying not to overburden your town planner or assistant town planner either, but that would be great. Uh, I'll schedule my meetings around whatever works for anybody, so they could be there. The more information and the more collaborative I could possibly make this, the happier and the better it'll work. Just before the, the COVID hit, I, I had been reaching out to different towns and, and areas that were similar size, different things like this, to find out how they're set up for their, you know, whether you want to call it economic development, you want to call it community development. However, some of them call them something, some will call other things. I uh, then the world kind of turned around, and I, I didn't get a whole lot of responses, so I'll try to reach out more and find out more how other places set up and give you specifics, if you have, if you have questions on other towns like Grafton, or Westboro, or Northboro, or uh, Ashland, or even Framingham, Marlboro, any town, Berlin, I'll find out what you want and see how they're set up, and you can say, yeah, they seem to be working. I'll do whatever.
I have an idea, John, what about, um, kind of thinking about a re- reverse corollary on this? Um, kind of like the master plan does, in a sense, where the EDC formulates maybe um, some things that they want to present, and then question, have questions and feedback, and they send a representative from EDC to the Planning Board meetings. Because we're having um, from last week, from the last Planning Board meeting, moving forward, we're carrying this as a discussion item until we open the public hearings um, for the fall town meeting, whenever that will be. Um, so do you think that would be a way to handle it?
Standing updates on everything I have questions on, like if more to my more concern is, is the Route 9 area, and trying to get more business, moreover than, than the overlay district, personally. I know, but that, you know, we have that standing, and that's already great that we can come on and ask.
Oh, you're saying more broad-based, so like, it could be like, initially, you know, the EDC comes in, this is what we're working on, and this is the goals we have, and then the Planning Board could give a, you know, quick discussion and some feedback, and you could get a feel, whether it's, you know, a quick roll across, how do you think about this, and then you could, someone could report back to the EDC with that information. So just another way of looking at it.
Yeah. Again, ideally, I was, I was really requesting, I was really hoping I'd have somebody that could make the meetings, have some skin in the game, and really get into it with us, to be totally honest.
Yeah.
But it doesn't sound like there's an appetite for it, and I appreciate, I appreciate taking the time to.
Well, I don't think it's, just to say, it's not the appetite, I think it's the bandwidth. Planning has been extremely busy too, and with Sarah on board, she's already facilitating meetings, you know, we're trying to cover everything, and it's, it's just, you know, it, it's, it's kind of straight out, so we're not trying to deflect. We just want to, you know, be able to also provide, you know, what we can, but you know, it's the bandwidth, that's all.
Oh, I understand, I just, like, for instance, was, I'll, I'll just put out a something. So, outdoor dining, everybody knew it was coming. Two weeks after, other towns are all open for outdoor dining, we have a meeting on, hey, who should be doing this, and how should we handle this? We're a dollar late, a day late and a dollar short, you know, which is hurting our local businesses. I mean, we've lost English Flower Garden, because they, they couldn't afford to funerals, there's no this, there's no that. I just hate to see more businesses leave, because we've already got a pretty good-sized vacancy rate, and I don't, I'm, I'm still just trying to figure out how I can even get them in, I, I, I'm not sure to get to keep.
I think we processed a whole restaurant one pretty quickly, that's the only one I've seen and over the last.
Again, two weeks after, the restaurants are already open. It's not just you, it was the whole town, it was other towns.
No, I know, I understand.
Open, and it was like, we've been asking, sending emails, saying, hey, who's gonna, just things like that, it would be great if we had a collaborative board, selectmen, planning, everybody involved to, to try to keep it. Uh, that was my pitch, if you guys, it doesn't sound like anybody has the bandwidth, again, or appetite for, uh, uh, if anybody did have the bandwidth, and I appreciate your time, I really do.
Some of these restaurants too, I should say, John, I'll talk to Marika too, that what I've noticed is uh, they don't have people who are willing to come back and work in the environment either. You know what I mean? So, they, some may be willing to open, but they can't get the staffing who wants to take the risk, or, or they've moved on in interim or whatever. So I don't know, it's kind of like, all these things going on, strange.
Yeah. Well.
Kind of get back to normal as much as possible, as soon as possible.
Would be nice.
I'll say, John.
Yes, sir.
If uh, this, if there's nothing more, then we'll move on to our next agenda item?
So do you want to just take a, so is there a vote on that, that you, just no discussion, no further discussion, nobody's no Planning Board member?
I think what we'll, I think what we'll do as a bare minimum would be, when we find out that you're having a meeting, the town planner or Sarah will uh, send out an, an email to the board members to see on that particular day or night, if a, a member could, could participate.
Okay.
And even if, if one of us is free as well, and can, and can attend a meeting that's held during the, you know, work hours, we certainly, I, you know, I attended them in the beginning, and then the workload just grew and grew and grew, and.
I've attended a few as well, so.
And Ms. Luchel has as well.
So we try, we're trying to cover them.
Okay, well, thank you. And you guys have a great night, and again, thank you for taking the time.
Sorry, I just have one more comment. I also think just agenda-specific, so I think if there's something very specific that you require support on, having that feedback, um, and I think we had provided that to the crew who came in last year at some point, um, talking about the downtown development. It's just trying to understand when you do need the feedback, or the, you know, the cross-functional collaboration, giving us that heads up, um, because a lot of time, it, I, I don't know about my other Planning Board members, but I kind of wait until the last three days before our Planning Board meeting, and I cram it all in, because I work full-time. So it's just trying to figure out, if I have an ample heads up, I'm able to kind of address those things, but I think really, agenda-specific and questions, I, I think that could be an approach with that clear clarity of role and responsibility could help.
Alright, so.
I could, you know, I could definitely, you know, try to find time to go to those types of meetings.
Alright, well, thank you. Um, agenda-specific, if we could get some feedback or any questions on the third round, that the V-MUD 3, whatever you want to call it, um, within the next couple of weeks, that would be great, so we can pass that along. I will uh, keep that in mind.
Very good, thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, everybody, you guys have a wonderful rest of your weekend, hopefully everybody's got AC, because I hate this humidity, but anyway. Take care, thank you so much.
Thanks for your spirit.
Take care, bye.
Bye-bye. Karina, next item on the agenda.
Next on the, item on the agenda is, um, we carried the open space inspections for fiscal year 20. If the Planning Board has any additional comments, having had a further chance to review the report, please provide comments to me individually. Um, the presentation by Lucas Environmental is scheduled for the August 10th meeting. Uh, the Open Space Committee Commission, uh, Open Space Preservation Commission has met a couple times and is planning to meet on Wednesday, um, to provide some final comments on the report to planning, which will distribute once we get those. Uh, and then I'll provide, provide my comments, the comments I've received from the Planning Board, and open spaces comments to Lucas Environmental, so they can update for a final draft, get that to us before August 10th, so you have a chance to look at the final draft, and then do a brief presentation on August 10th. That's the update. So if anyone has questions, you can say now, or you can email me or Sarah.
Okay.
Alright. Any?
Next item.
Alright, next item. The next item is, um, discussion item for deed research committee appointments. Um, A, the Planning Board would need to reestablish the committee for fiscal year 21, expiring June 30th, 2021. On the committee previously was Mimi Luchel and Jesse Stein, and at their two or three meetings ago, the Open Space Preservation Committee uh, voted to recommend Freddie Gillespie as the third member to the deed research committee, and again, it's, um, there's a potential, some funding available in CPC to do some finish work or some updating on any new developments, perhaps something along that line, which the committee could work on with planning.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we uh, continue the deed research committee with the uh, members that were attending before. Marnie, second.
Jesse, oh, uh.
Jesse's a member, potential.
Right. So.
We need a second. Second.
Motion's been made. Karina, is that what, is that what we want? Is that what you expected? This motion?
Yes, I expected that the Planning Board would make a motion to reestablish um, or continue the deed research subcommittee um, for a one-year term expiring on June 30th, 2021, including, the members would be Jesse Stein, Mimi Luchel from the Planning Board, and Freddie Gillespie from the Open Space Preservation Commission.
Yeah, I think that's what I said, so moved.
And.
Roll call.
Marnie? You seconded that?
I did, second again.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein abstain?
Luchel abstain. Lee Han, yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda.
Uh, we have the Planner's Report, just a couple of quick things to go over. As you know, you may have gotten from alerts through the town e-alert, uh, the state um, has entered into phase three, and so has the town, I believe, starting um, this past Monday, or today, not this past Monday, we are on Monday, um, July 13th, the reopening of the Town House via appointments to the public, so um, a, a notice went around um, to the public with contact information for each department, so if you wish to meet with someone at the Town House, or other facilities, I believe that you would make an appointment, and then um, there's opportunity to enter the building to do business, um, with certain restrictions and social distancing, and we keep a log of who actually comes to our department, that in case there is a potential person who has virus, that, um, we know who they came to, and we can, and follow up with the Board of Health. So, that's the update on um, town's opening. I want to point out that Main Street Reconstruction has started again, if you haven't noticed, at the intersection of 85 and Main Street, and if you go to the um, DPW website, they usually give a good update. So it commenced on July 6th, and the work will generally move from east to west, starting at Park Street and moving towards Common Street, and will generally consist of lowering structures in the street, and then removing asphalt and the road base, then replacing existing base with new gravel, installing the base layers of pavement, and raising structures. Project is set to be completed November 15th of 2020. Work remaining to be done for the length of this project is installing the granite curb and installing gravel for sidewalks, installing sidewalks and driveway aprons, laying the top course of asphalt, painting signs, and landscaping. So um, that's where that stands.
Does the project involve uh, catching fish?
I not haven't, why? Why do you ask?
Look at Andrew.
Oh, hey, that's stealing the show right there. Is that your twin brother behind you, on the boat? Very nice.
Next item on the agenda.
Hold on, two more things. Um, Mimi Luchel, you're going to, at tomorrow night's Board of Selectmen's meeting. The Board of, Planning Board had recommended you to be the representative for the Metro West Regional Planning, uh, Metro West Regional Collaborative, um, so tomorrow evening, they're going to officially appoint you to that role. Um, and I think you've already been getting emails, along with Marty Healy, who's the other rep from the Board of Selectmen, just so you know. On August 10th, um, for the Planning Board.
She freeze?
Yes, I think so.
I hope it wasn't my fish picture.
Scared her away. Um, applications, we're anticipating for that, and then um, 5 Breck Neck Hill Road, Jack Bartolini is um, hoping to convert a one-family to two families, so part of the ZBA special permit application needs a report from the Planning Board, which will be discussed at August 10th. Um, the Open Space Monitoring Report will be on the agenda for presentation and discussion from Open Space Preservation for Stone Brook Village Open Space Sidewalk. Good news, the Conservation Commission accepted the Housing Production Plan. Good work, Sarah, she worked really hard, she attended the meeting, made some revisions, encouraged the revisions, we got feedback from Town Council or Conservation did, that approved some of the language in that, so, there will be a, tentatively, there's a Shopsy meeting at the end of the week that Sarah is managing, after which, um, there'll be the Board of Selectmen will submit a letter to the DHCD with the updated Housing Production Plan. So, that'll be good. Uh, and that's all I have for the Planner's Report.
Did you want to, without getting into detail, mention your uh, meeting with, that you had with um, the Rec Department?
Oh, yes. Uh, we had a super productive meeting, um, Sarah and I attended, yeah, with Karen Gallagher and Tim Davis, and Arthur Eddie, who's the landscape architect with the consultant for Traverse Landscape, and um, he actually asked for the meeting, so that we. And he actually asked for the meeting so that we could go through all the review comments I had provided on the prior submission. So it went very well. They're working and moving forward and we'll see when they submit, we'll review the plans. I think they were hoping for August 10th, but that submission deadline is this Thursday, maybe Friday morning for that meeting. So they've made good progress. So I'm optimistic.
Very good. Any questions or comments on that? Move on to the.
Just clarity, that's, that's the lighting, the sports field lighting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it's the upcoming applications for the Mooney Field and the Near E tennis court lighting projects. Sorry about that. So now we have the meeting minutes.
The minutes.
Chairman, make a motion. We approve the meeting minutes from June 22nd, as written.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Lutrell, yes. Ullahan, yes.
If you look at the bottom of the agenda, you will see the deadlines. Can you read those, Karina?
Oh, sure. Decision due deadline, so Seven Chestnut Hill Road Barn for major site plan approval is a 60-day timeframe for decisions. The deadline for that is August 21st, 2020. Our next meeting is August 10th, falls within that timeframe. Then the 145, 153 Middle Road A and R, which has a 21-day timeframe for decision. Deadline was July 28th, 2020, and the Planning Board voted this evening to endorse that. So we're in good shape for that.
Karina, if we, if I come in around noon tomorrow, you think you'll have everything ready to go for Middle Road to sign?
Sarah?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Kate.
You're on mute.
Yes, sir.
How you doing?
I'm great. How are you?
Good, thank you. We didn't talk to you tonight, so wanted to say hello.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I wanted to say a big thank you too, and we'll be, Kate and I and Sarah are working on updating Kate's agreement for the fiscal year 21, where she will continue to do the fabulous job she's. It's true. Yes.
Fortunate to have all of you.
Thank you.
And great work all across the board. Excellent work.
It's because we have a great board.
That's right.
Your hair.
Mr. Mills.
Motion adjourned.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Lutrell, yes.
Ullahan, yes.
We are returned. Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye now.
Bye, guys.
Bye.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Sarah.
Thanks, Kate.
Bye, guys.